With that, Mr. Dodd, do you have opening? Is it still?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have a question.
Okay.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, board members. We will open with the adoption of the agenda. I just need a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments? Anybody wishing to come forward? Nobody here, but we have people here who sent them forward. Moving on to school support services. Mr. Bishop, and I think it's Ms. Swain. Captain Swain.
Are you getting out on the boat at all?
Yes, we have been out on the boat.
Okay, good.
There's a few days that don't rain, so that's pretty good. The first request or item is to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
I have a motion to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Counts, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
We currently have forty-three instructional positions posted and thirty support positions posted, and as of yesterday, we added eleven positions, TOSA positions, to student services. So we will be transferring, moving, and posting those positions as well. The second agenda item is to ask approval of the affiliation agreement with Indian River State College for internship placement.
Make a motion that we approve the affiliation agreement between the Indian River State College and the school board of Citrus County for interns.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve of the affiliation agreement with Indian River State College internships. Questions, comments?
I feel there will be interns, what field, what field will they turn in?
Brendan?
It's an elementary ed.
Okay, elementary ed teacher?
Yes, one is one teacher. She's actually an employee with us. She's a power pro that's going through the online service through Indian River, and we just had Mr. Bradshaw and I created that association agreement, and they agreed to. So she'll be interning actually at our office.
So for what, general elementary?
Yes.
Will there be specialized internships?
Especially for this one person?
It's just for this one person. Unless somebody else in Citrus County goes into Indian River, now we have an agreement that they can go interning with us.
Thank you. I have one question, it's just the English teacher deal. Passive voice in page eight of ten, five point one seven insurance. It says, "The policy shall be obtained." That passive voice ties the subject, so I want to know who's obtaining and who's paying for it. The student, Indian River, or us?
According to Indian River, it was up to the student.
Okay.
Indian River said they will not, they will not do it. It would be the student that would be responsible to do that.
That seems a bit pricey when you do a million and two of you. Yeah, well, it's standard, but it's sort of pricey for a teacher.
Some schools take like St. Leo, I know does it for them, but this particular school said they wanted to make that change last year.
Do you know what the cost of that is, potentially, or?
Can you guys check for it before they go on campus?
Yes.
No, I've got this information, I pay for it.
Indian River's.
First one, I saw it at college, it's your part, student. Yes.
Yeah, seriously. Well, all the, so far, all the ones that we have done, the schools have their own, and they have published them. This particular school actually wanted to make that change. That was one of the requests, if they wanted to make that change. Me, I would have switched to the college that already has it and put it go.
Good, okay.
But she was having a.
No, I agree, I agree. Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
The third agenda item is to ask the board's approval to name Jennifer Megan Vanderhar as assistant principal of Citrus Springs Elementary School.
I move that we approve Jennifer Megan Vanderhar as assistant principal at Citrus Springs Middle, Citrus Springs Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Jennifer Megan Vanderhar assistant principal of Citrus Springs Elementary School. Any more questions or comments?
Usually we get something that we group that, you know, what did they?
Their resume is usually attached to that. I suspect that's been just inadvertently, didn't include it in the backup, but I know someone can get that too much.
We will make sure that you have a copy of their system AP profile.
Yes.
And I, I.
I think the resume has been also, I don't really, does it, oh, no, principals have been, principals have included the resume.
And I talked with Megan at Coaster River High School, and she's a phenomenal teacher and educator. She really is.
I think we were asking if we're changing, uh, or if we do things, but no, it's just, that was just left there. I didn't want to ask particularly about her, but just.
That if it is not.
Just in the future, if we.
That, absolutely.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a good day.
Good morning, Ms. Wilson.
Good morning. I request approval of the addendum to the lease agreement with Silver River Mentoring Instruction Incorporated.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with Silver River Mentoring Instruction.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Count, I'm sorry, by Ms. Bryant, to approve the addendum to lease agreement with Silver River Mentoring Instruction, commonly known as SERMI. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. I ask approval for the addendum to the lease agreement with Pay Center for Girls Incorporated.
I'll make the motion to approve the addendum to the lease agreement with Pay Center for Girls Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Ms. Counts, to approve the addendum to lease agreement with Pay Center for Girls Incorporated. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
I ask approval of the award of bid two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven Roger Weaver evacuation route to Pave Right Incorporated.
Move approval to award the bid two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven Roger Weaver evacuation route to Pave Right Inc.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve award of bid two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven Roger Weaver evacuation route to Pave Right Incorporated. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dodd.
In reference to the roundabout and deletion of that from the original bid amount, which saved us over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I was a little bit, I want to make sure I've got my, I want to make sure I've got it correct in my mind, what we're doing, because we were breaking this out into two projects.
Correct.
But the original bid then went out with that in it as one project.
Correct.
Okay. And so we will rebid the roundabout?
Yes, sir. We've already got a draft contract prepared, ready to go upon for approval today's bid, and we will leave it as an alternate to add back in at the cost of the original bid, the three hundred and fifty-three thousand, at any point during duration of the contract, active time. So what that does, as we spoke last board meeting, it gives Mr. Dixon the ability to go back and get the funding for that, and then we can add it back in at any point at that cost. It's the simplest, easiest way for me to be without having to go back and rebid the entire project.
Right. And since this was a single bidder, you were able to negotiate.
That's the only reason we can do that. If it wasn't a single bidder, we couldn't do that.
Right. And that puts us in line, though, after we remove that with the amount, the budget.
Construction budget, yes, sir. Approximately eight hundred thousand. That puts us in the.
So when are we trying to do the roundabout?
As soon as Mr. Dixon receives funding. He's not here to answer that.
But he did tell us at the last meeting that the, you know, where the back fee fund is.
Yeah, the fund, the source is available. It's just a formality, and by doing it this way, the board is not exposed to that cost without having the funding secured in the event there becomes an issue with it. This way, we can begin construction without delaying the entire project, so we can actually start turning some dirt.
Then the resurfacing of the parking lot, what is our, what's the life on that? I mean, how much more life would we be able to get out of that parking lot?
We, we try to.
Did you bring your crystal ball with you?
Well, we try to, right, the industry is every five years, we don't maintain that based on square footage, we'll talk about that later in the morning, but right now we should be able to get another five years out of the parking lot, once we do that.
I don't know, I appreciate that you are very conscious of how much money you save and how you handle projects.
Try to get them moving. It's hard right now. Construction industry's jammed up. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
I ask approval of the disposal of the active surplus property.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Counts, to approve disposal of active surplus property. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Attorney legal matters, do you have anything?
Just a little bit.
I'm, the floor is yours.
I do not have an SRO contract for this day, although I think we were going to step closer. In the original SRO contract that came back from the sheriff, it contained a whole section in regards to guardians, and we discussed with our legal counsel, we determined that that was better separated out of the SRO contract, and that they don't go together, and create another contract. So we're working on a memorandum of understanding in regards to guardian program. We're still negotiating one section of the SRO contract, which I believe we have resolved with adding another section to the memorandum of understanding regarding our school safety specialists and the rights and duties of the school safety specialists are, and, you know, where the school safety specialists can go, and where they have to be if they will cover, you know, access to the emergency operations center, not just their emergency emergency, but, of course, the training, whatever, the drills and everything else, and, you know, something like that. So I've just called this morning, actually, before I came here, that they're in agreement with the M O U, and so I started working on finishing the memorandum of understanding of how those issues of the SRO agreement, the changes that they would like to make and be contingent upon entering into the memorandum of understanding. So that, we're not going to make a change to have everything else worked out that we need to remember, and so I think that would work. I will not be here for the July night meeting, I think it's Wednesday, and I'll be on for the fall week, and so I'm going to return in the next week, and I'll have this too before I go. I don't see a problem with that. But, you know, I didn't see a problem with this negotiation, so. So that's where we are on the, on the SRO contract. The last time that I was here in front of the board and discussed with y'all, you know, giving it authority to follow all student research, all that, I think that if we enter to the memorandum, if we enter to the memorandum of understanding, we would not be in need to do that, to cover the issues that I would have to follow all, which I think is in the board's best interest, at least at this point, Tom, to wait to the July night meeting, and see if we can get around to the M O U, and agree all of it back, agrees all by the sheriff, so that the board members, you know, can tidy that up. And that's all I have.
Remember. And that M O U is going to discuss this issue of the building access.
Yes.
Of emergency operations, emergency management.
Yes.
Those functions, and the initial indication is that, that there's going to be some, there's going to be an agreement that's acceptable to the school board, right?
Yes.
And for the chief and for the guardians.
Well, the guardian portion really outlines, you know, what the sheriff's responsibility is, because the sheriff's the one that's sort of classed the guardian, so it kind of goes through, you know, what the sheriff's responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are. You know, we have to send over employees, qualified employees, to, that can go through the guardianship training, and has to have, you know, it outlines what the sheriff is going to do as far as all of the training is concerned. The sheriff's office has applied for a grant to provide equipment for guardians, firearms, bulletproof vests, you know, those types of things, and, and part of the statute says that these items will be impartial, so it would be anything that's over and above, you know, what comes in on that grant, you know, we would be responsible for. So it's going to outline some of that. We need to have some, you know, some agreeance in there, because the seventy thirty also made provisions regarding that any information that would identify a guardian or an SRO or a private security or, you know, school police officers is exempt confidential from public records, and make sure everybody understands that, so that, you know, if a public records request comes in, we don't turn over that type of information. So there's a bunch of information that goes in there in regards to the guardian section also, which is pretty much what they had and what they had placed in the original draft I got back from the sheriff's office. I just didn't feel like the guardian portion needed to be in the SRO portion.
Right.
So if you, if, I don't want anything to happen that if you end up with an issue, once we enter into the SRO agreement, I want it to only deal with SROs. I don't want something that would occur in regards to a guardian to affect the validity of the SRO agreement or the breach of that agreement, so, and vice versa. So that's why I prefer that I would separate it out.
And we, there'll be nothing that will address any of our employees, and said, "That way may not go to this meeting," so that will not be in there?
I don't think there was an issue in regards to the school safety specialist issue.
And that won't be there?
That will be addressed in the, in the M O U. A guardian M O U will be addressed, allowing that, allowing that count. And because statutorily, the, our school safety specialist is the liaison with all of our first responders and law enforcement, has coordinated, they do, you know, act shooter, you know, drills, and, you know, kind of contact with SROs and, you know, first responders, and our school safety specialist is also the first member, is our liaison in regard to emergency management, and so they're going to have to go to those situations. And, you know, the way the original letter was written, it was fine as long as it was an act of emergency, but there's so many other things. You might not have a hurricane or an act of emergency for four or five years, but in that interim, it's just like what we do, you know, there's training that goes on, there's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that happens behind us, and we just be ready in case something happens, and so our school safety specialist. Personally, I believe they're going to be allowed to participate anyhow. You know, it's just a way of making up of doing it from having to file, and that way we can do that process. There's other things.
Anything?
We don't.
Even when we don't have a direct hit for hurricane, we have numerous times a year where they're, that's activated, and everyone's in there, even sometimes the governor comes down.
Absolutely. You don't have to have a direct.
Let's everybody know that our schools will be closed tomorrow.
Yeah, the amendment is going back to ninety-two, which wasn't a hurricane that flooded everything, caused, caused so much damage. So it was all, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of different scenarios defined in chapter two fifty-two that constitute what an emergency is and activation of the E O C, as far as emergency management. So, and as y'all well know, you know, in those events, you know, we have to open up schools as shelters, and that is, and that is by statute. So there's a lot of, a lot of planning in there that goes on, and as, as you remember, you know, last year, when, when the hurricane went across South Florida, or turned north and went up to North Florida, you know, our shelters, you know, got packed from people that were fleeing South Florida and heading, and heading this way. So it's not only just a, just a Citrus County issue that occurs, I mean, it's a statewide issue that occurs when something like that happens. So I think it'll work itself out, though. I'm cautiously optimistic.
Anything else, board? Okay. With that, Dr. Heber, did you have anything? Did you have anything?
Um, yes. I did want to share that the governor, in his budget, has allocated Citrus County nine hundred thousand dollars for a project, called Project Shine, that I had requested through the House and the Senate.
Now, that's power.
Well.
So the. Can we talk to you about some other items for next year?
Anyway, this was a, a request, you know, Mrs. Himmel and I had some conversation about supporting our elementary schools with some of the challenges they face with behavior. So we had worked on this proposal that really is focused on providing students with emotional behavioral mental health conditions, interventions, and support. So part of it is hiring, and you heard Mrs. Swain talk about the student services TOSSs at each school. So it'll be a TOSA at eleven elementary schools. They will be housed under Jen Greco, so Jen Greco will be the supervisor, and Jen will manage then the work that they do. Now, they'll be assigned, so each school will have their own, but they'll meet with Jen on a regular basis. She's going to provide training and resources, because she is now in student services, and really focused on how they can support that, really providing counseling for students, individual and small group counseling, social, emotional counseling, any of those things that we can kind of help be proactive on that, that end as well. The other piece that's connected is once we, because we got to look at each of the salaries of all the employees, then my goal was to hire five to six additional counselors through Livestream that will then work at the elementary schools. The hope is, the Livestream counselor will be shared with two elementary schools. So it'll be one Livestream counselor that'll work through Livestream, come in, and support two of our elementary schools. So they'll have one teacher and then a Livestream counselor. Additionally, Mrs. Humble and I have looked at the mental health allocation, and the proposal that they're making, they're having a meeting Thursday, is we have been unable to secure a school psychologist, as I believe I shared with you recently. We had two positions posted last year, could not fill those with the mental health money. We are now down, we've gone from a loss of, of one psychologist, so now we've had to increase the workload of our sites in order to do that. So we know that we cannot, salary, I know is part of it, trying to attract them into the profession is, is an issue. So Ms. Humble feels that social workers, we're seen to be able to have more social workers, so we're going to shift that funding from hiring two sites to look at hiring two additional social workers. Kit, you know, the high schools currently have social workers allocated into the high schools. She would like to then place at least two of them at our elementary schools, and again, to begin to provide some of that support at our elementary schools with our social workers. So if you think about our elementary schools this next year, they'll have eleven TOSSs that'll be student services focused on the job description called Teacher on Special Assignment Student Services. Then we'll have Livestream counselors, one per two elementary schools, and then the social workers, that we're going to at least start with, looking at providing the social workers at the school. So that's kind of our plan as far as trying to address some of the social, emotional, behavioral, mental health concerns of our elementary students.
And that makes the school board member very happy.
And that's what I was hoping, that that would, by the way, and then, because that, a lot of this is, a lot of the concerns Ms. Powers brought up last meeting, and we were hoping.
Right, and I will address too, we did, Ms. Humble and I had some conversations about our guidance counselors, and although we are filling those positions, many of them were filling with folks that are not certified at this point, so they're, they're doing this out of field, they're, many of them are going back, getting their degree and their certification, but in order to be a guidance counselor, as Ms. Powers knows, you know, I'm a certified counselor as well, you have to have a master's degree, and it has to be in counseling, you have to pass that guidance and counseling assessment. So many people, you know, to take those programs are having some challenges finding a program to go into counseling, and maybe aren't even going into counseling. So we're thinking this might be a way, and maybe we can encourage some folks to look at counseling as an option and, and provide that. But I believe we have about five right now at the elementary level that are currently going, they're, they're working on their certification, but they're not certified yet, and when we post the positions, we're not finding certified people, much as we have with the psychologists as well.
Yep. Have we done a salary study on those school psychologists? And I appreciate the fact that we're looking, that, you know, we want to get these positions to deal or remove of social workers, but psychologist positions, you know, when there is traumatic abettage, I mean, they're the ones that have that, that training, that ability to deal with those counseling issues. So what can we expect moving forward to be able to hire school psychologists?
Well, I know that we need to do that. We have one psychologist that has indicated next year will probably be his last year, and he'll be retiring, and so unless we have some interns that come in that we can fill those positions for the following year, we could be in the same boat next year as well, and, and be down yet another school psychologist. So I do believe it's, it's an area that we need to really think about how we're going to address that, to, to provide that, because, again, we're going to stretch some of our folks very thin and not be able to provide some of that, because I, I agree with you, there is training and support and skills that the school psychologists have that some of these other folks, they don't have that. They haven't gone, you know, six years of school to, to do that and provide that, so you are correct.
Lynn Kirby's done some research on that, and we have some information that we're working on through, through Steve Bonner, negotiations, that they are part of the teachers base there, so we have to.
That was my question.
Through a separate, an additional increase of separate. And we have identified some figures that we have to go through on the process.
I think your statement a couple weeks ago about what the counselors do in the schools, in the middle school, high school, and in high school in particular, so much scheduling, that the person who's looking at being a psychologist or a counselor has this big block of, "Oh, I've got a scheduled one thousand children," you know, and that's, that's not an encouragement for a person to go into that field, so maybe like you're doing, if you're trying to sort that out and have someone, maybe someone else, or less work in scheduling and more work in, in intervention, psychological intervention, so.
And we're, Ms. Greco has taken the lead on that. We've met with the high school principals, we're talking about a plan, at least for our secondary schools, our high schools, what they can do, and then how can we kind of look at some of the workload that they have to be able to make some shifts so that the students can get the services they need? So we are working on that.
And also, let me ask you, if you would make a list, and I know Kit had a list of all the, the, not all, but the people you could refer to outside the school system to follow up, if, if y'all could maybe make, make an updated list, because I'm sure some of them are gone, because I know yesterday I had a call on who's outside the system is available. Well, I didn't have my list of who retired, who didn't, so I said I'll get back to you on that, because usually we do have a list, but we do have to update it every single year, so if y'all would do that, that would be great.
I speak to Ms. Humble, Ms. Greco on that.
That would be great, thank you.
And I have another question on the Livestream, the, we're using our, our mental health, some of the mental health funding in that, in that agreement with Livestream. Can you expand on that a little bit more? I mean, how that's going to look, just talk a little bit more about the partnership with Livestream.
The, and, and they have actually, they had approached us before this even came out, they had wanted to come in, and they had offered a, an amount of money that they said, "If you can give us this amount of money, we can provide this rest of the counseling," because they bill through Medicaid. So when you're talking about what I would see in the schools, it's really providing some of those wraparound services that the students would need at the school site, but as well, those counselors would be able to go into the home, and many times that's where the disconnect is, you know, the families at home, there's some, some issues, maybe some dysfunction occurring, and the school isn't able to go to the home, so those Livestream counselors can say, "Listen, we're going to go meet with the moms and the dads and the grandma and the grandparents and talk about what support systems we can do at home." So it's really kind of looking at those kind of services versus just what we're doing at the school, because oftentimes, Mr. Dodd, it really sometimes stems from some issues that the home might have, and maybe their, their need of services and support, as, as Ms. Powers brought up, that those counselors can say, "Well, we can contact this." can say, well, we can contact this group and this group and help you. Because maybe they don't have power, they don't have money for electricity, they don't have gas to come to school. So maybe we can get them some gas cars to get them in for meetings and, and provide some of them.
And I know when we met with Livestream, when we talked about those issues with children and families who are not on Medicaid, that they were going to meet those needs. And I take it that, that the funding, what, what they've looked at with our district would allow that to still happen.
Yes, yes.
Service regardless.
They, they are very supportive of wanting to do that. And they, I know they, they really have been wanting us to, to really partner with them. This will really, I think, help kind of move. We have a conference call with them, Ms. Humboldt and I do, this Thursday to have further conversation of, of what that looks like. But that is our idea of how we kind of see that support occur.
And also, the immediacy of response is very, very important in, in mental health. If someone has a problem, they need help, they need help now, if not three weeks. And some of the scheduling with people, it's three weeks from now on, these appointments. So, so we have to address that too. And I think with Livestream, people coming in will be able to do more and more.
If they're assigned to that school and we see an immediate need, they, they will know, okay, we can go. Because they're going to be working, they won't work for us, they're going to work with us. But, you know, right now, if they're applying out to get a counselor, you're right, to make an appointment could take two or three weeks. Where if they're working with us, they can actually build it in because their job is going to be Livestream counselors for Livestream, but specifically for the schools we assign them to.
And then I, you've answered most of my questions between these other ones, but the communication we brought up with Livestream also, that they would come back to the, the schools, especially the classroom teachers, so that they could still follow through on what's, what's happening. Because a lot of things, you know, was, oh, we can't tell because of the heavenly...
We, we really are working with Livestream and, and I know Ms. Greco and Ms. Humboldt, you know, as we're meeting with those groups. Because we meet with them once a month. There's a, a whole committee that meets a mental health convening. And we've been talking about how we keep that open line of communication, because that is very important.
We also had the issue of there was going to be a baker acting at the hospital. And I understand now that no, there's not going to be a baker acting center at the hospital, be someplace else. And Livestream was looking for other places and they found a couple, but they didn't work out. So do you know where they are right now?
I, I do not. I cannot respond to that.
I think Thursday we'll find out where, where they are. But that's very important too, to have a baker act facility. But so far it hasn't worked out like it has been wanted to do. And Livestream is working on making it work out.
Right, right.
Dr. Heber, you talked about the challenges and you've talked about them, Ms. Heber as, as well, of the concerns of, you know, how do we get some of the school psychologists and, you know, how do we track them? We've talked about, you know, looking at salary, you know, and, and we have some of the challenges there. It, it seems like one of the initial steps to becoming a school psychologist, a lot of students are doing. It's a very popular major of, I know students even our own students. I wonder, as silly as it sounds, I wonder if maybe promoting that need of this, maybe school, you know, the school guidance counselors and, and some of those other areas that we've talked about, I wonder if, if we provided a slide or something to each of the high schools and have them promoted on their sites of, of students that are, you know, either in college, that they're, that they're checking on their own monitor and coming back, or that are nearing completion. Because I know we've had some of those students that have, you know, they're maybe now just to that point that they're interested in coming home. We're not as bad as we, we were when they left as high school students. Now they're missing home a little bit. I mean, it, it couldn't hurt to just, you know, have that and try it. Because I'm always surprised the, the feedback we get from doing some of that. But I do think there's people that want to come home and they may not realize that we have, you know, those jobs and maybe with those qualifications. My thing is always call HR and find out. Because if there's a way for them to fast track into a certification or look at it, I know that, that we certainly are wanting to, to take those options and consider those opportunities.
And I will tell you, we do have a great district. I mean, I'm not, I'm speaking here to the, to the crowd that you all agree with that. We have two, two people that live in another county that choose to drive to Citrus as school psychologists and work here. They could make more money and work less days in the other county, but they feel very valued and supported. They had done their internship here and they really appreciate, you know, what, what we do, the supports we provide. So I do know, you know, once you come in, it's a great place to be. But it's a matter of, you know, when people are looking at, okay, I can make additional money just by driving 20 miles down the road. You know, many people, when they're looking at trying to put food on the table and pay bills and move forward in life, those are the decisions they're going to make. But I do know the rest of it, what Ms. Kirby provides in, in the director of ESE overseeing that program, they all feel very supported in, in what we do in our district. So I think that's commendable for your leadership, superintendent's leadership for our mental health supports for kids.
One more comment. Yesterday I was talking with a psychologist and was questioning about the pay and stuff. And one point that I actually hadn't thought about, the person said that, well, monies were borrowed by the people in the psychology department to be able to get that PhD in psychology, and they can't afford to work for $35,000 a year because they can't pay their, their borrowed money back and live in a house and not a tent, you know. So I never considered that. And that, that's a very real thing now with the loans that are out, so.
It's a real challenge. It is a real challenge.
So maybe that's some area we can, I think in the past we used to do that. We used to maybe pay for a part of someone's education. I don't recall, it's been so long, but maybe that's something we can look into.
Maybe there's a grant.
Well, but that does bring up, if we don't have the opportunity within a bargaining situation to improve that, maybe there is an opportunity for us to be able to, or could we on a contracted basis, you know, for each year they, they commit to that we, you know, that we reimburse some of that, that cost. I'm open to doing that across the board. I mean, but, but definitely it would be a great place. We could maybe pilot it is our most critical need of areas.
Right. And you know, and the area of the psychologists and the counselors and all, they're part of an administrative team at each school, but they're not administrators. So maybe there's some sort of quasi thing that we could research going there. I don't know how it works in other counties, but I know they do the work, but they're not put on the scale or ship.
Is it dean, if I recall, where it starts to be an administrator as opposed to a TOSA?
Well, a dean, a dean is still instructional staff.
It's still an instructional staff.
I think you get leadership opportunities. I will say, in looking at some other counties, some of the school psychologists are not on the teacher. They're on their own, like they have, this is their salary schedule, and they're not part of the bargaining unit. So there are some options to look at other ways to, you know, if you were pull them off of that, if you wanted to be able to.
Would it be them that has to make that request?
I, I would, I would be able to speak to that. But I just know when I've looked at other districts at how they've done that, they're not part of that. So that might be something to consider.
And maybe you could look at it and let us know. That would be a way.
Yeah.
And I had a conversation with Dave Quat with the Suncoast Credit Union, oh, probably a year ago now. Because we were talking about trying to recruit teachers with, with loans. And I said, well, could we possibly look at where they've gotten financed and maybe we could refinance them at a little bit lower interest rate in Citrus County if they would, they would come here. And David thought about it. So I mean, I, I just kind of put that out of my mind for a while. And now this is coming up with a psychologist. So I approach him again and see if we can refinance them at a much lower interest rate. And that, that would change a lot.
Yep. Yes, yes, it would.
Thank you for all the...
Thank you. Mr. Bishop? Mr. Mump? Mr. Dodd?
Well, it was exciting to see the Project Shine money make it through. The governors didn't sign, go sign the law, didn't get vetoed. So that was a great, that's going to be a great thing for our county. And to those, to all those people that worked on that. And Senator Simpson also was a big supporter of that program. So I'm glad to see that we have that opportunity for his behavior specialists. Because as we've all talked, you know, the discipline issue in our elementary schools is something we gotta, we gotta try to, you know, try to...
You have a lot of experience with that.
Try and do as much as we can to help, help, help with that. So, and I'm happy to see that the mental health funding allocation, the plans that go on there, you know, if they're looking at ways that we can be prepared for counseling and addressing issues. So I've got a VAB meeting tomorrow. That was the one that was canceled from two weeks ago. So my, I think this might be my last I address the board meeting.
Unless they reschedule one for the end of the week.
I will be going on as an alternate. And they did say that they just need a letter. So I guess Lisa's...
I'll get, I'll, before I leave today, I'll go ahead and just get with Lisa and do one.
This counselor knows I'm going to be taking on that responsibility. So, and I'll serve as the alternate in case there's a need. I know Ms. Powers has been the alternate for me. Appreciate that. And then she's covered a couple of times for me. So, and I am, we did the, did the Stoneman Douglas update at the FSBA conference. And I've got a couple other ones that I'm involved with. But I'm looking at the opportunity to do a program, an update program here in Citrus County. And I'm going to be speaking with the superintendent when she returns. And I just have some ideas on that. But I thought the interest is pretty high in that area still, just kind of seeing the work of the commission, but also on making recommendations and just having a better mindset, better understanding of, you know, why the recommendations have been made. And so I know you all, I know Kenny wasn't able to be there, but I think that you all three were at the, were there for that. So.
It was excellent.
Yeah. So it's something that, possibility to do something here in locally. But I'll be, I'm kind of working on that. And then I was curious about, we talked about updating the appearance of the board rooms. And, you know, I just kind of, I've seen other, other districts and just, I, I think if you're going to get a refresh, I know we had talked about kind of the new logo up here on the wall and doing some things different. But I'm just kind of curious if there's any, any news on that front or anything.
I think our topic number one may, may, may have a conversation about that.
Yeah, there's no, there's no plan at this time. Certainly Festival of the Board, we could definitely do that. But I would encourage that discussion probably after I work, or worked up on the primaryality of our budget.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not telling you all major, major changes. I'm just, you know, a couple of small things I think that we might be able to give a, a different look and a refreshed look to the board area, but.
But certainly if something more must be, we can take care, we'll take care of it. Just wondering if we'd like to do it.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Ms. Brown?
I enjoy the Forest School Board Association. I miss Thomas.
Thank you.
I'm not having you there.
Thank you.
But Doug's presentation was awesome. It, it was standing room only both times. And there was a lot, a lot of interest. It was great. And I went to St. George Island last week and I relaxed.
And then people down at FSBA in Tampa said great things about you.
You know, what a wonderful person you were, etc., etc. Usually blush the whole time.
Second thing, very good news, you know, downtown, that 4th of July is not going to be as it was gathering around the lakeside and seeing the fireworks. However, in Hernando, Hernando Town, July the 4th, there's going to be fireworks, 9:00 PM over the lake and sponsored by some people. Grace Church out there is going to have a cookout above, where you bring food.
Potluck.
Thank you. Thank you for the word. Potluck. And it starts at 6 o'clock. And until the food runs out, that's going to be available. So then do that. Then 9 o'clock fireworks all over the place. So even though we won't be down there, this will be able to see the fireworks at the Smink Advertise House. So the kids know there will be fireworks. You won't miss your fireworks this time. I was very happy with that. I think that's all.
Well, once again, I drove back to Citrus County from Tampa saying hi. I'm so happy. I work in Citrus County. But Doug did a fantastic job. And I'm, I think Citrus County would welcome what we saw down at the board meeting. And, and you were well missed.
Thank you.
So we, we with you. I had a, I had a thing in the paper about Reverend Gray and doing the Leadership Summit podcast, August 8th and 9th. And it listed people that are involved in it. And it didn't say anything about the school board. So I thought we should probably do something about that. Because I think we should probably join in. It's going to be at the Cornerstone Baptist Church on August 8th and 9th. So maybe we can have Lisa look into that and see what, if we can make our reservation. Because it sounded like people had to sign up to go. Okay? And that, I'm not going anywhere. My children are, so I'm babysitting with my grandpuppy. Which will be fun.
I agree with the, that I'm pleased that the governor's veto pen did not hit the projects, particularly for the school district in Citrus County. I thought it was interesting, I don't know if you all saw, that Hernando County Schools had done a hardening of a million dollars and it did get the veto on that. I wondered if it had to do with, why would any, you know, one group be able to, you know, have an advantage of, of a hardening and, you know, and have that. So that, I don't know, Doug, if you knew anything more on that, but.
I just know that I saw it, you know, I saw, I was a little surprised in some ways that they had applied for that. But I didn't read specifically what they were doing to harden. But that's...
It wasn't very specific and not that...
Yeah. That may have been part of it. But I kind of think along the same lines that you're thinking that, you know, it would not really be very equitable when we were dealing with capital and hardening for one district to be able to have that, that amount of money. But I don't know.
And if they did, then there'd be a rush, I would think, next session for, we have hardening issues too. So that was, yes, I, I missed FSBA and, and that is, that is always such a great learning opportunity. A lot of people don't always understand if you haven't been on the board, that's really, that's where we go to school. That's where we, we get our learning. And along those lines, I was asked by our new president to lead the Leadership Services Committee as their new chair. And so I'll be working with the plans of developing, of course, the conference trainings as well as the certified board members and the new board member training, ethics training. All of that falls under that umbrella of learning and professional development. And so I'm going to be taking that over. So I, I was asked and I did accept that. And I'm excited about that new, new leadership opportunity. So, and my vice chair was appointed as chair of advocacy and Beth McCall from Marion County, she was doing a fabulous job. If you don't or aren't aware, this is also when the legislative committee starts the process of looking at, you've probably gotten some emails from FSBA, looking at areas that we're looking to add into our platform. So if there are thoughts about things that we should be doing or that could be added into that platform, fill out that form. That really is what starts the process of getting those platform on it. And I know this board has taken an active role and, and continue, will take an active role in those areas. I do like, last year FSBA did a totally different kind of format, a much more generalized than if, I think if you saw on the report card, we really accomplished a great deal from a lobbying perspective on it. And I think, I think there's a lot of things that are aligning within certain parts of the legislature and FSBA. And that is encouraging to see.
Oh, Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things I forgot to mention. And along with what you're saying, because I, I was working on both nationally and statewide, some suggestions for platforms. And I sent them off. They're going to be part of the suggestions presented in September when, when our FSBA people go up. And also, that's for, for example, also I went to the meeting on Saturday with representatives from Daniel Webster.
Yes.
Was there, they were very receptive. And we know Daniel Webster supports both the homeschooling, private schools, public schools, a whole, whole gamut. But his representatives were very receptive. And again, I was talking about some of the same issues I've been talking about, about getting some more people, some more money in the system to help the kids who've had problems and to address those. But both groups, state and national, very receptive to what you're talking about. And I know that state will be done because we already hit it up. So it'll be done. And I know the state will be done, because we ordered it up, so we got, and the national hopefully.
I think this year you saw within Florida School Board Association some shift. Not, to me, any different than our ideals and thinking has always been, but in approach. It was a very calculated, that's going to, I think you're going to see that even amp up a little more this particular coming year with Tim. And along those lines, one of the big issues that continues to be is what is now, instead of charter in this, is choice. And you've seen, I think FSBA is saying what we have struggled in our own districts, to say, are we really against things like the Academy of Environmental Science? No, we're there promoting it. Are we against choice when we talk about our own academies? Those are choice programs, they just happen to be choice within our school district. We support those, and this board has encouraged those. And so we've somehow, you know, thought of choice as negative, and I think there's a lot of effort to say, choice is good, and we can show you how we're using choice in our district very, very effectively. So that's going to be that shift that takes place. So I'm really excited, I think there's some positive things. I think, you know, yesterday, I'm not sure if you saw, but the governor signed the Career and Technical Education Bill, which this district played a very strong role in, supporting Representative Ralph Mizulo and Senator Simpson. And the governor signed that bill at NASA, of all places, you can't beat space. And it, you know, we, you know, a lot of the things that we do in Citrus County, you talked about when you come back, a lot of the things that we've been doing, if you listen to Ralph Mizulo, he gave a briefing on it recently, and he said, yeah, Citrus County's been doing this, we just wanted to also add it into the wall so everyone else knew they should be doing it. So that was really exciting to hear that. And again, we've been doing this stuff, we, you know, we know that, yes, Ms. Humboldt?
Oh, no, I was just thinking, I'm out like this movie, but I was thinking, many of these topics we discuss, but we go beyond discussion, we discuss it, then we go and find a way to do it. And some places don't go beyond discussion, then discussion's enough. So you brought up the changes, yes, a lot of changes. We'll get the job done, we work on it, and so what, it takes 12 hours today, so what, we'll get the job done.
And I do call that about Citrus County when I talk to people from the outside, and I know Mr. Bishop's going to probably be talking to us about some things here in a minute, but I think it still falls into the same thing. I say we're the Goldilocks district, as far as school districts. We're not too big, we're not too small, we're just the right size, but we have just enough resources that we can do really good things, and do them pervasively and systemically in our district. And what is the end result, is to do what's best for kids. And I, as always, am grateful to serve with each and every one of you. So with that, if there's anything else, we will go ahead and adjourn then our special meeting, and we will hand it over to staff for our workshop. Oh, we're going to need a shade session?
Safety and security meeting.
We're going to do a safety and security shade session first. So I'm adjourning this, and before we, I think I actually opened it, so I'm going to just close, recess the, did I not open it?
No.
Okay, then I don't need to recess. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go into a shade session.